United States of America, considering public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business tonight is the clerk's report, Barbara.
A roll call.
Oh, excuse me, oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Pledge allegiance and then roll call. Can we have a roll call, please, Barbara?
Bachman.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman.
Here.
Stevens.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move to excuse Mayor Stevens. Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Barbara, can we have the clerk's report, please?
Yes. First, you have before you the council workshop minutes of June 16th, 2022.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a... Was it in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Roll call, please, Barbara.
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Abstain.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Lieberman?
Yes.
You also have before you the council meeting minutes of June 16th, 2022.
Second.
Was it in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have to abstain.
Barbara?
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Abstain.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
I need to abstain because I wasn't at the workshop.
But you were at the meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Lieberman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Barbara, will you read this, please?
Ordinance O-062216, an ordinance adopting the planning commission's recommendation, with condition, to approve the application of the Kleinger Group for right-of-way and easement plat approval for the Grand Villas of Clayton with request, excuse me, with respect to 15.144 acres and bearing parcel ID number M60031020032 within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance O-062217, an ordinance adopting the planning commission's recommendation to approve, with condition, the application of the Oak Tree Development for a change in zoning from residential, single-unit district, RSD, formerly R1, open space residential, to planned development district, PDD, formerly PD3, planned development business, and to further approve the preliminary development plan for property located at the northwest corner of National Road and Haber Road to be called Northwood Estates, consisting of parcel ID number M60030120022 and parcel ID number M60031020105 and containing 33.69 acres within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
The only question I have is, Northwood Estates, is that ever used, is that terminology used for emergency responses? Because isn't there a Northwood Estates back that way, right? So like...
I'll be honest with you, I don't know if it's Northwood Estates back, I don't know if that's what the original plat was called or not. I mean, the Northwood Estates is just a name of the community that they've designated. I mean, that's not going to be used for emergency response or anything like that. I mean, it would be the address that's assigned to the respective property.
Well, I know you can't use the street that even says seven to anything that already exists, Jack.
Correct.
And when there's two or three streets, one of them named after my wife.
Sure. And when they assign street names, which they haven't assigned street names yet, that's a process that goes through our office and then it goes through Montgomery County's office and they make sure there's no duplicates or what have you. So there have not been any streets assigned to this development yet.
Okay. We are approving the rezoning?
Correct. It's for the rezoning.
Preliminary approval of the map we saw, the print we saw.
It's just a preliminary plan. They still have to go back and do their final plan. They will come back, they will submit their traffic studies, their topography, their stormwater studies, all those different studies that they have to do. We're also going to be figuring out the traffic signal there at the corner. All those things have to still be figured out. They will put that plan together, then they will present that to the planning commission. The planning commission will then make a recommendation to city council. So all those things still have to happen. This is just saying, the rezoning was approved and conceptually, from a preliminary standpoint, you guys have approved what they're proposing.
But, Jack, we already had a traffic study, which suggests two drop lanes and a traffic light. Now, are they running the traffic study or is the city paying for it?
So they have paid for the traffic study themselves. It's their engineer, but then our engineer reviews the results. They have already done it, but all that information's going to be compiled further for the final development plan. They just introduced that information so that you guys were aware of what they have already done.
I mean, are they going to do a traffic study now while school's out?
The traffic study is complete, and I apologize for including the traffic study. The traffic study is not typically required, the traffic study is not required for the preliminary here. They've already done the traffic study, they did it while school was in. I was just including all the different...
Wasn't in favor of what the traffic study said, that's my question. I mean, he didn't like the drop lanes and he didn't like the light. I mean, I can understand he didn't want to pay for the whole light.
Sure, and I understand that. Those are all things that are going to be figured out for the final development plan.
It was different than the traffic study we had when we met with the school board about chipping in on the project. I don't know how many years ago that was, but...
And I don't know.
The school board was basically the same people, but the traffic study said that the light was an absolute necessity.
What the school board told us within the last couple of weeks was that their study said the traffic signal wasn't going to help them at all. With that being said, what Mr. Oaks' traffic study showed was that it met, I believe, 95% of the standards for a traffic signal. Our engineer has recommended the traffic signal. We are on board with moving forward with figuring out the funding of the traffic signal. Those are all things we have to figure out. If it gets to a point that the funding for the traffic signal isn't going to be able to be figured out, Mr. Oaks is aware that something's going to have to happen. I mean, he's aware that that traffic signal needs to be put in. Again, those are all things that will have to happen within, over the next several months, as they're putting together their final development plan.
Are there any other questions? Have a motion?
Move for approval?
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business, we have two ordinances, we have three ordinances, no, two ordinances and three resolutions. Will you call first ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-072219, an ordinance approving amendments to Article 6 and Article 27 of the city's personnel practices manual.
Good evening. You have in front of you the recommended amendments to our personnel manual, which include the addition of the Juneteenth holiday, as well as the addition to Article 27, which is the auditor of state's fraud reporting system. They recently came out with some additional ways to report fraud anonymously, so we wanted to include those while we were making changes to the personnel manual.
Any questions? Any motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
You have a motion by Kenny and a second by Dennis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Or, ordinance, excuse me? Ordinance O-072220, an ordinance directing the Board of Elections of Montgomery County, Ohio, to place on the ballot at the election to be held on November 8th, 2022, the question of whether the city of Clayton, Ohio, should effect a government electric aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section 4928.20 of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Move for approval. Emergency, first. Yeah, for the emergency. Sorry, move for emergency.
Second.
You have a motion by Tina and a second by Dennis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Will you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution R-072249, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Northmont School District for the provision of school resource officers for the 2022-2023 school year.
Amanda, are you taking this one, then?
Yes, this is the same contract that we approved last year, nothing's changed.
Well, I would disagree with that only because of a place called Uvalde, Texas. Now, does an SRO officer carry a weapon?
He does, yes.
And everything in the contract says that the SRO officer is not allowed to do anything without consulting the principal of the building that he happens to be in at that point in time.
So, what I can tell you is, I have had conversations with the superintendent, yeah, as has the mayor, about this particular subject, and I can tell you that he is very comfortable with our SROs and our police department being able to handle any situation that would arise at the schools.
Without getting the permission of a principal, because the Uvalde got in problems because they waited for a long time before they did anything for the right person to tell them to go ahead and do it. And I don't think we need to have that problem here.
We won't have that problem here.
Tom is a very qualified SRO.
I completely agree.
Or whatever he does, he's very qualified at, yes.
But our officers also are involved in an active shooter training program as well.
They are, yes.
So they actually know how to respond.
They do.
Timely when something goes down.
Yes.
But there's only one there at the time, though.
There are two.
One not in the same building all the time.
Well, one in the middle school and one in the high school, yes.
They also have a chain of command, so they know when something goes down, who's in charge.
They absolutely do.
That seemed to be the lacking point that we're discussing or had come up from before. And I would find that situation to be highly suspect and unacceptable, which does not exist here.
I would completely agree.
Are there any other questions?
I'll move for approval.
We have a motion by Kenny and a second by Greg. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Will you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution R-072249, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Northmont School District for the provision of school resource officers for the 2022-2023 school year.
Amanda, are you taking this one, then?
Yes, this is the same contract that we approved last year, nothing's changed.
Well, I would disagree with that only because of a place called Uvalde, Texas. Now, does an SRO officer carry a weapon?
He does, yes.
And everything in the contract says that the SRO officer is not allowed to do anything without consulting the principal of the building that he happens to be in at that point in time.
So, what I can tell you is, I have had conversations with the superintendent, yeah, as has the mayor, about this particular subject, and I can tell you that he is very comfortable with our SROs and our police department being able to handle any situation that would arise at the schools.
Without getting the permission of a principal, because the Uvalde got in problems because they waited for a long time before they did anything for the right person to tell them to go ahead and do it. And I don't think we need to have that problem here.
We won't have that problem here.
Tom is a very qualified SRO.
I completely agree.
Or whatever he does, he's very qualified at, yes.
But our officers also are involved in an active shooter training program as well.
They are, yes.
So they actually know how to respond.
They do.
Timely when something goes down.
Yes.
But there's only one there at the time, though.
There are two.
One not in the same building all the time.
Well, one in the middle school and one in the high school, yes.
They also have a chain of command, so they know when something goes down, who's in charge.
They absolutely do.
That seemed to be the lacking point that we're discussing or had come up from before. And I would find that situation to be highly suspect and unacceptable, which does not exist here.
I would completely agree.
Are there any other questions?
I'll move for approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
Greg, second. We have a motion by Kenny and a second by Greg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution R-072250, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for delegation of activities with the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio, relative to the Northview Park All-Inclusive Playground Project, grant number B21UC39004.
Mr. Gorman, thank you. If you may recall, last year, city council authorized staff to apply for three CDBG grants. One was for the All-Inclusive Playground, Northview Park, one was for ADA restroom upgrade at Westbrook Park, and one was for a sidewalk addition between Hunter's Glen and Salem Avenue on Union. Because of the way the funding is, there's only so much funding available for the whole entire Montgomery County region, we weren't lucky enough to be able to secure the $80,000 grant request for the All-Inclusive Playground at Northview Park. So before you tonight is the authorization for Ms. Zimmerman to enter into the agreement with Montgomery County so that we can move forward with putting that out to bid. The most likely scenario is that the playground will probably be put into place sometime next year. That's with the assumption of how long it's taking for equipment to be coming in and what have you. So, in total, it'll be about $180,000 project. We're very excited about the possibility of opening up Northview Park and having a playground that's available for individuals with all abilities across the Northmont region. So, we're very excited about this project.
Any questions?
I'll move for approval, thank you. Thank you for securing this $80,000.
Yep, thank you.
Second.
And so, we have a motion by Kenny and a second by Tina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have to abstain.
Dennis abstains? Oh, okay. So we have a roll call, then.
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
I'm abstaining.
That's the end of our new business this evening, and we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple items for you. First, a while back, city council established the salary commission. I still only have three people who are interested, and then I'm still looking for two more. So if you know of two people who would like to serve on the commission, please send them my way. One is your friend, or the one that you suggested, Tina, she is still in that group, but I still need two additional people to field that commission. And then I have a couple work session requests. I would like to request that on August 4th at 6:30 PM, we meet to discuss Meadowbrook and kind of give council an update on how things are going, since we've been kind of in control of everything since April. And then for August 18th at 6:30 PM, I'd like to request a work session to discuss economic development and give council an update on things that are going on in the city. And then lastly, on September 1st at 6:30 PM, I would like to request a work session to discuss traffic safety. If you're in agreement with those, we can get those advertised respectively as they come up. Or first, yeah.
And the traffic safety is reducing the speed limits on Main Street?
Yeah, there are several streets that staff had looked at, possibly, but I wanted to make sure the council was okay with that, because if we're going to reduce speeds, we would need to do studies to actually warrant the speed reductions.
Well, the meeting on Meadowbrook, we should start our other meeting right afterwards, because from what Elaine has told me, Meadowbrook is running like a top and...
It absolutely is, and I have absolutely no problem doing that. It'll be a 10-minute meeting, and we'll be out of here.
That was when business slowed down at the shredding event, she released that information. Any other questions for the city manager?
I do have one more item, if you don't mind. So, we have been invited to participate in the Inglewood Arts Festival. The only person I have heard from is member Kelly. So if everyone could let me know by Monday at the latest, if you're interested in participating, it is Saturday, August 13th.
Do we have to do a painting to be in it, or?
You do not have to do a painting. All you have to do is sit in a golf cart and you're good to go.
In the parade?
In the parade, yes.
No dunk tank.
Yeah, no dunk tanks. You know what, I'll have to send that out to you. I don't remember off the top of my head. I think before we, everybody met at like 7:30-ish.
Before that, I think, normally.
Not last year, it wasn't, no, it wasn't last year, no.
I thought it was. And we meet here and then?
Yes, we would meet here.
Get to the golf carts that way?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you could all just let me know by Monday, so I can let them know. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any other questions?
I was going through my email this morning, after I was reminded to look at the city emails, and there was an email from a resident concerning the fireworks timing. Can we sometime possibly sit down and discuss what might have happened as far as the 4th of July in terms of any complaints that might have been had or other issues that might have come up with fireworks?
So, I talked to Chief Hamlin about that, because I figured it would come up at this meeting, and he told me that we had roughly 11, not roughly, we had 11 complaints for that weekend. And he said that that is normal, that is usually what we get for the 4th of July, so it wasn't abnormal.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with you. Seeing people shooting off fireworks at, you know, 2:00 in the morning is a little excessive.
And it went on for days, I mean...
Well, so, the way the law is written, it's, they can shoot fireworks off the weekend before and the weekend after the holiday, at least for the 4th of July holiday. So that may have been what you're hearing. If council wants to restrict that, that's fine, we can do that, but I can tell you that for that weekend, the number of complaints that we received was not any more than what we had received in the past.
I mean, trying to run around, trying to find everybody who's shooting something off at 2:00 AM is next to impossible.
Right.
Though I'm just saying from the standpoint of things like that coming up, I mean, how do you address it? How do you curtail it? Or, how do you address the people's issues, concerns about it happening?
Right. So if people are shooting fireworks off at 2:00 AM or past, I think it's, I can't remember what the timeframe is, I think it actually may be just slightly after dusk. They're not allowed to shoot them off after that. If they call, if residents call, they can come out, the police can come out, and we have nuisance ordinances for that. There are noise ordinances, and they're not able to shoot, they're not supposed to be shooting those off after that time. And to be quite frank, the large mortar-type fireworks that they're shooting off aren't even legal under the bill anyway.
Any other questions? Okay, our next order of business will be visitors' comments. Earl, do you have anything tonight?
Earl Harlemert, Parks Director, 6420 Levon Court, real close to our new park with the upgrade swing sets and everything. It's going to be beautiful down there. I commend Jack and the rest of the team. Our parks are really going to shine this year and next year. We're going to be just wonderful with all the new equipments going into the parks and everything else. What I want to bring up tonight is, I would like to invite everybody to July 28th at Meadowbrook Country Club. Excuse me. I got Mr. Willie Williams going to teach you guys how to line dance. Willie is quite good. Willie does a lot of this wedding stuff. The reason why we picked Thursday night instead of Friday, Saturday, because he's busy Friday, Saturday, and Sundays for dancing. We're going to start it at 6:00, in case you need any liquid courage. 7:00, the dancing is going to start.
Is 6:00 for us old people?
Yeah, old people, you get there, so we can get you limbered up and warmed up, so you're ready to go. So, Willie's going to spin records and come out, and he'll actually come out and help you dance. He'll show you right, he'll be right in front of you dancing. I know Willie, he'll be, if there's three lines, he'll be in the third line and everything. Willie's quite a young man, quite a good character, and a very nice guy. It is all free to the public, except for the liquid courage, of course, you have to buy that. But it's all free. Willie's donating his time. He's bringing all of his equipment. He's quite expensive if you go to a wedding and Willie's there, so please come and enjoy, have fun. That's what it's all about, and it's really all about is introducing Clayton, or introducing the Meadowbrook Country Club to the city and allowing more people to understand what we have. We have a gem there, just to get the people out so they can see it and enjoy it. So it's all free. We'll have potato chips and pretzels, so come enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Ma'am, would you like to say anything? No? Okay. And there's no one else here, so we'll move on to council comments. You want to start with you, Dennis?
So, I want to congratulate Earl. He put on a, I'm not sure the official name of it, but at the conference center downtown, he had everybody from all over the world, I guess, come and display all their clocks, and I had an opportunity to take a tour of it, and it was really very impressive. I don't know the name of the award you got, but I understand it's like Father Time Award or something, but I want to congratulate you on that and a successful presentation. Well, congratulations. The only complaint I had is that I couldn't buy a watch there because I wasn't a member and I wasn't, you know, going to become a member.
Earl, can you get Dennis an application?
No.
Tina?
I'll pass, thank you.
Greg?
I will pass.
Brendan?
Not a whole lot to add. I know it's been a month since we've all been together. Did see, you know, and I forget what organization it was, but, you know, again, one of the top safest cities in the state and safest city in Montgomery County. You know, that's a big deal. But at the same time, for us, it's just business as usual, and that's a combination of, you know, the safety departments and really just, you know, the community. I think that the community is the biggest part of it. You know, so, but, yeah, it's something definitely to advertise and hang our heads on, but also, it's like, all right, you know, keep doing what we're doing. Only other thing I had, and I know the last meeting, I kind of mentioned about, you know, the discussion over the intersection of 40 and Haber, and I know, and it was brought up tonight with, you know, a new traffic study that's going to occur. Looking at, you know, it looks like there's going to eventually be more development in that area. Obviously, there's the interest in Haber and Sweet Potato. So we've got, you know, we've got two intersections there, obviously the one with, or, excuse me, that's up at Haber and Philsburg Union, and then Sweet Potato is just south of that. So, you know, you've got multiple intersections there, you know, one-lane road on each side. So, I think just at some point here, I know we're getting this intersection looked at, the Haber and National. If, we do, I think it would be looking forward to the future development of really coming up with kind of a plan for things, of that whole kind of area. Because, and this stuff takes time, but you do look at right now, you know, we had multiple intersections that a few years ago needed addressed. Two of them have been, one's been 100% completed, one is about completed there at Westbrook and 49, one, we're in the working process here at Hoke and Winger, and so now it's just a few more. But, and I know these things take time, but I think if we, I know it's kind of coming along with this traffic study, but I think we want to be proactive on that, so we're maybe a little bit ahead of the game when, you know, and maybe we'll get some of these grants and everything to us quicker. So, that's all I have.
Kenny?
I wanted to, first off, recognize a couple individuals that have passed away this month, one being my neighbor, longtime Clayton resident Ron Stock, and also my aunt Shar Powell. Shar was not a Clayton resident, she was in Inglewood with a Clayton mailing address, but since 83, she proudly claimed Clayton as her hometown because of the mailing address being Clayton, so our prayers are with those families. I wanted to remind everyone, and I would hope the city can make a graphic and share it, that the sales tax holiday for back-to-school supplies is August 5th through August 7th. With the increase of prices of everything, that's at least a little nice break for families that are purchasing the back-to-school supplies. So once again, that's August 5th through August 7th, no sales tax on items that are related to back-to-school, as, as back-to-school purchases. We have a resident here tonight, Elaine Herrick. Thank you for helping us get the ball started for the aggregation ordinance. I, like many other Clayton residents, got our AES bill this month and saw that it almost doubled like anticipated. So we are all feeling that, and we're hopeful that this aggregation will help keep the prices down for the City of Clayton, like other surrounding communities have done. Happy birthday to Tim yesterday, hope you had a great day. I was with Commissioner Debbie Lieberman last week at the Ohio Public Leadership Institute at Ohio State, and we explained, we got to explain our roles, me being on council, her as a county commissioner, with other individuals from around the state that are participating in this program at Ohio State, so always good to see her and hear all the good things they're doing with the CARES money like we received tonight, so that was nice. Two, two last things, Cafe Terra I saw was hiring, they're looking for help. I know other restaurants and entities around the city are looking for help too, so if we could continue to share those posts as they're putting them out, maybe they can get some high school students in there to help as students become the age to work, et cetera. So we want to see them thrive and do well, and we all know they need a staff to, to make that happen. And finally, voting is happening now for the primary election that is August 2nd. You can vote next week, by the time this meeting is aired, 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, on Saturday, 8:00 AM until 4:00 PM, Sunday, July 31st, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, August 1st, 8:00 AM until 2:00 PM, and then the polls will be open August 2nd for the normal voting hours of 6:30 AM until 7:30 PM. So it's a unique primary, it's, it's a continued primary from the first one in May, and individuals will see the polls open. The city may get some inquiries as to what's on the ballot. I just direct them to the Board of Elections and the BOE staff would be more than able to help them explain what may be on their ballot, so that's all I have, thank you.
Yes, I would like to thank Jack and his committee, Elaine, for the shredding event which we had on July 9th out in front of the city building here. We had quite a response, and all the people were very thankful for the possibility to shred their private materials, and I don't know how many pounds we used, Jack, you may have that information, or how many people were there? 4,900 pounds of shredding, and they shredded them on the spot this year instead of loading up the truck and taking them back to their plant, and I think everything went, went very well. Now, and Kenny mentioned some people here locally, but one person I'd like to mention is a lady that lives on Dominican Drive, Renalda Friedman. There was a nice article in the paper, she is a survivor from the Second World War in the concentration camps, and it was a very interesting article, and she's a very interesting woman and, and quite a person. Other than that, anybody have anything else? Dennis?
Did Judge McMillan live out here?
He used to live on Frederick Pike, Dennis, for, until Lois died, and then he moved down south of town somewhere.
He passed away.
Yes, he died this morning, or it was in the paper this morning, I saw that. I was looking for a motion to adjourn, Dennis, but.
I've moved to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Normally you go to Greg for that.
We have a motion by Dennis and a second by Tina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned.